Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the November 7th, 2011 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. Tonight, we have Reverend Clark Hosman from Moayok Assembly of God to deliver the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand. Thank you.
I don't see him.
He's not here?
I think we'll get Vic Colberson to see if he can stand in for us.
Yes, sir. Please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It is my privilege. Let's pray. Father, to you belongs all the glory and the honor and praise, and we are so thankful that we can be here tonight. We are honored to be in this place tonight, Father, and we pray that as the discussions are held, as the decisions are made, that your hand would hold sway and that you would be glorified in all of the decisions that are made tonight. We thank you, Father, for each of our commissioners. We thank you for each of their staff people. We thank you for each of those who have been appointed and have gotten us to this place tonight. We pray that the business this evening is conducted in good order, and as we enter into the Thanksgiving season, Lord, I pray that you will help your people remember the very things that we are supposed to be thankful for, and most especially, Father, may we be thankful for you, for it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir. At 6:00 PM this afternoon, we had a work session to discuss beach driving issues in the four-wheel-drive area of the Outer Banks. We'll move on to item number one, approval of the agenda. I have two additions to tonight's agenda. First, I would like to add, as item 3A, a resolution to introduce a local bill requiring voter identification prior to voting in local elections. And also, I'd also like to add, as a closed-session item, to consult with our attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege according to GS 143-318.113. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one other agenda item to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
That would be a budget amendment for repairs to the, um...
Waylon.
No, the washing machine at the animal shelter. I think it was in the amount of $1,500 and some change, but I guess, Dan, do you remember what the exact figure was?
No, sir, I don't, but we certainly can insert that for you.
But it was less than $1,600.
But your intent is to reimburse the amount that she's requested?
To fix that dryer or washing machine, whichever. I forgot which it was.
Yeah, the amount she requested for the washer.
Yeah. So I'd like to add that to consent.
And one other, Mr. Scanlon, how about the issue with the Waylon Club? Is that something we need to take action on tonight?
Leftover funds, I think, from the shoreline.
You certainly can take action on that. They're just looking for direction from the board.
I think they have a meeting tomorrow.
1:30.
And so they were going to ask their board to vote on it, so would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept their proposal to take leftover shoreline revitalization money and apply it to repairs. My suggestion is to apply it to the $230,000 to repair the bulkhead in the bridge.
Put that as item nine in consent agenda.
Okay, item nine in consent. Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it. Item number two is public comment. This is a time when the public can come forward and speak on any issue that's not appearing on tonight's agenda, and first, we have Mr. Josh Bass, who is Director of the Chamber of Commerce for Currituck. Thank you, Mr. Bass. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've come before you this evening to let you and Currituck County citizens know that on Sunday, this coming Sunday, November 13th, from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon at the Comarlet Club, we will have the First Annual Poultry Pardon and Winging. The sheriff, we were thinking, the way the president pardons a turkey for every year for Thanksgiving, Currituck Sheriff Susan Johnson is going to pardon a wild goose, or a domestic goose, for hunting season. This is going to be a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce. We've got some great silent auction items. We have two different pairs of tickets to Redskins games, very close to the field, Redskins-New York Jets and Redskins-Patriots, I believe, and then we also have Baltimore Ravens tickets. So we have got some very good, we've got tickets to a Ricky Scaggs concert that are going to be auctioned off. We've got tickets to a Martin Short comedy show. We're going to have door prizes, drawings, there'll be other fun family events throughout the day, so it'll just be a good, kind of lighthearted time that afternoon. Tickets are $20 in advance. You can get those by calling the Chamber of Commerce at 453-9497, or you can certainly see me, and then 25 at the door.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand dress is casual, camo or jeans or anything?
Dress is very casual. We certainly want to reflect the hunting heritage, so...
Why not camouflage?
Camouflage is fine. The goose may not see you. You don't want to scare him too much. He is visiting, so...
And for whoever is unlucky enough to win my dear Redskins tickets, go have fun.
Well, they should at least have a very good time.
Gosh, yeah.
They have a nice stadium.
I know they do. Next, we have Megan Argusto from the Corolla Education Foundation.
And Adam Hess.
Okay.
I should have signed up first and not followed the guy who had the Redskins tickets. Anyway, thanks for giving us a chance to speak tonight. I'm Megan Argusto. This is Adam Hess. We know some of you individually, but we're here tonight on behalf of the Corolla Education Foundation, of which I'm the president. Adam is treasurer. Over the years, we've informally invited you to our events and sent you emails about our progress with regards to a school in Corolla, and we thank you for the positive response we've gotten from you so far. As you know, Currituck County is a geographic wonder that sometimes or perhaps often presents challenges for you and for our school board, for services. Educating kids in Corolla has been a challenge for at least, since at least the 1950s, if not back 100 years, even when we still had Kitty Hawk. We believe that a small school in Corolla can be very successful. We have natural resources and human resources that we know favor good education. We sent out a survey, a community survey recently. We have the results of that survey and the application that we submitted today to the Department of Public Instruction. I brought a copy for y'all, since it took me two hours to make them six copies. I brought you my card where, because our application is available on our website, which is waterseedgevillageschool.com. Right now, I'm sure most of you know, the Corolla kids wake up at 6:30 in the morning to start. If they're at Jarvisburg, they'd get off the bus at 8:30 for school that starts at 9:00. There's three buses, if not four now, coming to Corolla. It's a great operational cost to send the few kids that are on the bus to the mainland. The survey that we sent out indicated that we could probably expect about 30 children our first year, most of them who live either in Corolla or Corova, some of them off your grid on a homeschooling draw, some of them also kids of Dare County parents who work in Corolla, and a couple who are just interested in the curriculum we've put together. We know, a charter school is a public school. We're hoping that it would be, it's going to be a win for everybody. We know it'll lessen the operational costs for you all. The school we're proposing is a small K through six for our first few years. We may end up trying to grow a year a year, but the money that follows children now, for instance, my kids, you all have been generous enough to allow to go to Dare County, that per-student allotment follows them to Dare County. I pay the difference, because you know Dare County includes capital costs in their per-student allotment, and then state money follows my son, Kitty Hawk. So this would keep the money within Currituck County. It would be per-student allotment and state money here in Currituck County. There would be no capital costs for you all. Those costs fall on the nonprofit organization, the Corolla Education Foundation. We're by no means a shoo-in. The state legislation asks, demands, mandates a 65-student minimum. With 30 kids, obviously, we don't meet that. There is a caveat for geographic isolation and small student population. We have reminded them of that caveat to their state statute, but we're not sure they're going to take it in consideration. You probably know the cap on charter schools was removed this year. So we applied in 2010. Since then, we have received nonprofit status. We do have a facilities plan, and we're asking for a waiver for their 65-student minimum. We'll see what they say. We're just here tonight to keep you informed of those plans. We'll indeed let you know of our progress. Thanks for your time. I'll give Dan a copy of our application and everybody a copy of the card if you want to look at the application online. Thanks a lot.
Megan, I'm very familiar with the times. My granddaughter at Knott's Island catches the bus at 6:30 in the morning, and she gets back home in the afternoons at about 10 minutes after 5:00.
Yeah, it's not easy. It's hard to...
It's a long day.
...put all that learning. And as Allison Schuler knows well, this is certainly not an argument against Currituck's sound, basic education by any means. It's just a matter of the fact that our county has a little island cut off over here and over there, and we're trying to do our best to make those kids...
One other question for you, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Etheridge. I'm sure, I know you've been in contact with the school board. I mean, how, what is their position on this?
We've been in touch with Allison, sort of as our liaison to the board. She wrote us a letter of support, only because she understands that, and we've included that in there. In fact, I think page 79 and 80 are, or 78 and 79 are a letter of endorsement from her.
Okay, Mr. Etheridge, and then Mr. Petrie.
Is there anything that we, as the Board of Commissioners, can do to help forward your progress on this?
Appreciate that. We've been reticent to ask anybody. We've sort of been caught in this catch-22, right? We have few kids, so we have no school, so we can't ask anybody for money, so we have no school. But what we're hoping for right now is that they will say, yes, we will give you a charter standing, at which point, we're going to assess what our needs are. We're working on what we hope is a pretty good facilities plan that works well within our budget, and at this point, we're doing, we're doing well. We'll send out a big, "Please give us money, small schools need big monies" email, and then we'll be in a better position to know exactly what we might need in the future. So right now, we're just really trying to keep you abreast of our, of our progress. Thank you.
Mr. Petrie.
Is there anything Bill Owens can do to help her? I mean, can we kind of get him...
Oh, I've drafted a letter to him. I have not yet sent it, actually, just because I figured we'd let Department of Public Instruction get the application before we started to ask people to support us, but...
If we can give him a heads up that he knows it's coming, and then he can maybe grease some skids, if it's possible.
Great. I have spoken to him, or I had spoken to him with our last application, and he was very supportive. We figured, getting the application done, getting it on the website, talking to you all, we've just been trying to do our ducks properly in a row.
But I'm sure he's so busy that there's a lot of things you need to remind him, so just kind of squeaky wheel, if you know what I mean?
Okay, all right.
Okay, yeah, you have nothing to lose.
No, you're right. Well, except for annoying somebody, but all right, if you don't think that's a problem.
I have a, just, what kind of capital cost are you talking about? You're going to have to get a piece of property, a building?
Right. So what we're looking at for our first year is to lease a building, which we have lined up right now in our, well, or we're also talking to someone about renting modular space from them while they build a space. So we're looking at those two options, and then maybe move into a new construction, or which will get us through two or three years until we come and lobby for y'all to get a community center in Corolla, get your planning board to move into it, and then we can move into the library space once Jenny and Ben move into our new community space, right? How's that for a good plan? Put that in your five-year. Megan will be in front of us, bugging us about something else in a few years down the road.
She's thinking.
Right?
We can make some deals if you can help us out with the musret study area across from the lighthouse.
Oh, now you're, now you're out of my range, actually.
Well, you can just write us a letter. A letter for us.
Okay.
Megan, how many students are you talking about, the first year?
First year, 30. Based on birth dates that we received on the survey we sent out, and random conversations with people in Dare County, we didn't send the survey out to everybody in Currituck County and Dare County. We sent it to people we thought were stakeholders. You know, we're pretty far away from Moayok.
Going to be like a one-room school operation?
We would start out probably with two. It's K through six. We would prob, we're younger kid-heavy, because by the time they get in the fourth grade, you know, these parents are moving to southern shores. So we have a lot more kids who are four, five, six, seven, and eight, living in Corolla than we do 10, 11, and 12. So we're probably looking at K through two, and then three through six as our grade division. Two teachers and one director who would also teach part-time. We've got 154 pages of it for y'all to read. We've been doing a lot of thinking.
Any further questions? Thank you, Megan.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Young man. Next, we have Mr. Vic Colberson again, from the Community Thanksgiving Celebration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Vic Colberson, and on behalf of a number of churches up in the Moayok area, we'd like to invite the community and the commissioners and anybody else who's interested to come to a community-wide Thanksgiving celebration that's going to be held on Sunday, November 20th, that's the third Sunday of the month, at 6:00 PM at the Moayok Middle School. We have churches represented, New Life of Currituck, Church of New Beginnings, Good Hope Amy Zion Church, Samuel's Chapel, Pentecostal Holiness Church, Weeping Mary, and Christian Home Baptist. We've got just a great cross-section of brothers and sisters that are going to get together to celebrate together and have a wonderful Thanksgiving celebration this year. So we've done it for the past probably six or seven years at the middle school, have just felt led this time to come and make the announcement before the community and before the commissioners, and encourage you all to come, and encourage our county up and down to get together and celebrate the things that we have in common and stop endorsing the differences that divide too many people apart. So again, Sunday, November 20th, 6:00 PM at the Moayok Middle School, the third Sunday of the month. We would sure look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in our public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to item, yes, sir, Mr. Etheridge, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Just want to point, personal privilege, today is my dad's 85th birthday, and I just want to publicly say happy birthday to my father. They're out eating oysters, and I'm here enjoying the evening with all of you, so... But, you know, I'm fortunate that my dad is still with me, and I realize it more and more every day, and I just wanted to say, happy birthday, Daddy. I love you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I can't let that go without answering. My mom will be 84 tomorrow, and I'm taking her birthday in Chinese.
Maybe we can get him hooked up. I mean...
I think y'all need to sing happy birthday to him.
Well, I can't...
We'll wait till after the meeting.
I can't let that go, but I turned 35 yesterday.
Well, happy birthday to each and every one that had been mentioned.
Please say a prayer of forgiveness.
That's the one that told the truth about it.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item three, and it gives me great pleasure to read a resolution commemorating Veterans Day this year, which is November the 11th, 2011, 11-11-11. We have Mr. Bob Kohler, who is here this evening, and will be accepting this resolution on behalf of the Currituck County veterans. So, Mr. Kohler, I'm going to read that from here, and then I will come up and present it to you, if that's okay with you, sir. Whereas Veterans Day, originally called Armistice Day, is a federal holiday observed on November the 11th annually in the United States to honor all military personnel, living and dead, who served the country during times of peace and war, and commemorates the end of World War II. And whereas Veterans Day was first observed on November the 11th, 1919, the anniversary of the end of the war in response to a proclamation issued by President Woodrow Wilson that expressed pride in the heroism of those 4 million Americans who served, including 375,000 who died during the war. And whereas during the 1920s and the 1930s, many states made Veterans Day a state holiday, and in 1938, Congress declared Armistice Day a federal holiday. And whereas Armistice Day was renamed Veterans Day in 1954 to honor American veterans of World War II and the Korean War, and today, veterans of all wars are honored on the holiday. And whereas from the Revolutionary War to the present day, the contributions made by Americans, by our citizen soldiers who stand in our place to defend the freedoms we enjoy, cannot be calculated. And whereas every man, woman, and child in this great nation owes a debt of gratitude to those who served and who are still serving their countries, country so selflessly. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners recognize the past and present sacrifices of the men and women of the United States Armed Forces who willingly stood and currently stand in harm's way to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all of us who live in the United States of America, and be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners calls upon the citizens of Currituck County to observe November the 11th, 2011, as Veterans Day in respect for and to honor and remember the great sacrifices and contributions of these heroic, heroic men and women who valiantly served this nation and mankind during World War II and previous and subsequent wars. Adopted this the 7th day of November, 2011, and Mr. Kohler, if you would come forward, I'd like to present this to you, and I would just ask that, we do just this. We have a lot of our men and women overseas today who are fighting for our freedoms, and the sacrifices are great. Pray for them, have them in your prayers, and celebrate Veterans Day. Mr. Kohler, I would also like to thank you for the contributions you have made to Currituck County and all the things that you do as a veteran, and just, again, just thank you so awful much. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Appreciate it. I receive this proclamation for the veterans in Currituck County. You know, we go, I just want to go back for a second, where we, the memorial park that's down in Coenjock, when the Coast Guard gave it up and the county had it, I came in here to represent the veterans in the county, to say, we needed a memorial park designated for the veterans, and the county commissioners at that time agreed, and since then, that park has been a great park, and a lot of things go on down there, and that's where on Friday, November the 11th, at 11:00 o'clock, we'll have a ceremony, and our guest speaker will be a wounded warrior. He's coming in from Charlotte, so he'll be here to speak to the group, which is a little change than what we've had in the past, where we used to have politicians, judges, and those things. So this time, we decided, hey, let's do it first class, and let's bring in a wounded warrior. Thank you very much. God bless. Next, we have item 3A, and that is a resolution to introduce a local bill requiring voter ID prior to voting in local elections. Mr. Etheridge, I think you wanted to say a few words on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This started in Gaston County, which is just west of Charlotte. It's an attempt to, all 100 counties to come forward and put forth a local bill. There is a bill in the General Assembly that is just sitting there now. You know, we have to present driver's licenses or picture IDs about anything or everywhere we go today, except when it comes to voting, and that's our most fundamental right and responsibility as a citizen. And I think we all see the possible abuse that can take place with the way our system is set up today, to vote, and we hear tales of it. This is just something that would simply be that they have to present a photo ID when they go in to vote, and I don't think that's asking too much of the citizens to participate in our process, so I urge its adoption.
Would you like to make a motion? I shall move. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number four, public action, or public hearing in action, PB 1113, Bonnie K. Fullford... Oh, Lord.
Nayhouse.
Nayhouse, okay, I'm sorry. Request to rezone 3.921 acres from heavy manufacturing to agriculture. The property is located off Grandy Road, approximately 150 feet north of Nathan Drive, cul-de-sac, tax map 108, parcel 53, Papa Branch Township. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a rezoning request before you tonight. It is not a conditional zoning. It is a straight rezoning request, but it's unusual in the sense of it's what we would probably term as a downzoning. The property, which is, again, is approximately four acres, is located off Grandy Road, and it's currently zoned heavy manufacturing. This request before you tonight is to take that piece of property back to the agricultural zoning district. I'm not going to spend much time on this. I think it's a very reasonable request. You can see on the zoning map, to the north of this property, you have agriculturally-zoned property. To the south, you have an existing subdivision that's zoned residential. The emphasis or the purpose for this rezoning is to allow the property to be used for residential uses or for agricultural uses in the future. It's very consistent with what's around it. Our land use plan designates this area as limited service. There's several policies in our, there's many policies in our land use plan that actually support agricultural zoning in and of itself, so from that standpoint, it really fits well with the plan. Public water is available to the site. Services are fine, so really, staff recommends approval of this request from heavy manufacturing to agricultural. Again, it makes the property more compatible with the surrounding uses, and it's certainly consistent with the land use plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And the planning board heard this at their last meeting, and they did recommend in favor of this rezoning as well.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none? Entertainer motion?
I'll move. Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Open to public hearing.
For rezoning?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Necessary to hold a public hearing.
I will open the public hearing. Does anyone like to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
This is only the third time, I think, since 1994 that I'm aware of, we've had a downzoning.
Well, this piece was odd, setting out there where it was. It was, I just wonder how it ever got heavy manufacturing to begin with.
In 1985, it turned up on the zoning map, so on manufacturing, but we could not find out how that came to be.
Another one slipped through the cracks. Okay, item number five, public hearing in action, PB 1114, Pine Island Reserve, request for preliminary plat, special use permit for nine lots located on the east side of Ocean Trail, approximately 140 feet north of the intersection with Autobahn Drive, tax map 128, parcel 1F, Papa Branch Township. Mr. Woody.
Mr. Chairman, this is a special use permit, so it'd be necessary for anyone to present evidence to the, to the board to be sworn.
We have Mr. Derek Deal signed up. If you would come forward. Mr. Woody? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a special use permit case. It's a preliminary plat. This property probably looks familiar to you, because we've had several public hearings on this property over the past year or so. Tonight, what we're here before you with is a subdivision request to create residential houses. On the property, you can see the subject, the subject tract is highlighted in blue. Just to the north of that, you see a street named called Lindsey Lane. Those were the first four lots for this tract of land. It was initially a 13-acre tract. They have used a minor subdivision process to create four tracts of land, four residential lots. They're now coming back from the residual piece, which is... They're now coming back from the residual piece, which is nine acres, to create nine more lots. So you end up with a total of 13 lots on this 13-acre tract of land. The lot configuration is very similar to what you see in the Pine Island PUD. This particular tract of land is zoned, limited business hotels. It's a commercial zoning designation, but it does allow for residential houses. So this subdivision plan is consistent with the UDO. Land use plan designates it as full service in the Crolla Sub area. Again, the use of the property for residential houses is consistent with the land use plan. There's a copy of the subdivision plan. You can see you've got the lots that have frontage on the Service Street off of NC-12. To the ocean side or east of the lots, you see they've created open space along the Dune Line. Again, that's very consistent with, very consistent with how Pine Island PUD is platted. Within your staff analysis, we have the suggested findings for your special use permit. Recommend those be incorporated into your motion. Land use plan supports this, it's consistent with the UDO. TRC reviewed this plan. TRC does recommend approval. There was some discussion about how stormwater is managed. This is a little different from what you're used to in the sense, there is a stormwater pond that serves the 13 lots. However, they've also proposed some individual lot stormwater requirements, which means that when these properties shed water, part of the management of the stormwater will be handled on the individual site, while part of that stormwater will be handled on a open space for a stormwater pond, which you're used to. This is a little different for us, so you saw some comments to that effect by the TRC. But it did ultimately get recommended for approval by the TRC. The planning board heard this request at the previous meeting. They also recommended conditional approval. In their recommendation, they noted that the area is located in a natural heritage area, which I'm sure you remember that from the previous public hearings. They also noted a land use plan policy related to preserving existing vegetation on the site. And finally, the planning board included a recommendation, or excuse me, the planning department included a recommendation regarding the stormwater, which I just went over. So again, staff and the planning board do recommend approval of this subdivision. At this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Woody? Adrian.
Being a new commissioner this year, is this the same property, and I just asked Commissioner Rohr, so I just want to make sure I understand, is this the same property that was, an agreement was reached after some time between Sega and Turnpike?
Yes, sir. It was initially proposed to be a hotel facility.
Okay, but then they came to an agreement to build 16, other one, 16 homes?
I'm not sure of the agreement, but it ends up being 13 single-family dwellings.
They've already started building there?
Yes, they created four lots with a minor subdivision, which is, the minor subdivision is a subdivision that staff can approve administratively. So we've approved four lots already, and they are underway building houses. However, once you get to the fifth lot, you've got to come to the Board of Commissioners for approval. That's why they're here tonight.
Trying to understand the process, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Woody? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. We had one person signed up to speak who was sworn in, that's Mr. Derek Deal.
Good evening, Chairman, board members. My name is Derek Dale, and I'm with Quabell and Associates, and I'm available for any questions you guys may have. Ben Woody presented the case pretty well, and if, like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions for Mr. Deal? One, twice, so, hearing none? Thank you. I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to approve this with the staff findings, the facts, and recommendations included in the approval process.
I second that.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number six, public hearing in action, PB 1115, Currituck County Community Center Campus, request for a special use permit for an animal shelter, skate park, fire rescue station, forestry building, and the College of the Albemarle Regional Aviation and Technical Training Center. The property is located at 130 Community Way, tax map 52, parcels 14A, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 24, and tax map 60, parcels 15 and 15A, Crawford Township. If there's anyone who would like to speak to this issue, please come forward to be sworn.
Manager's not being sworn. Manager's not going to be sworn.
Yeah, be sworn out later.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to let Ms. Holly Wyatt, a senior planner on our staff, handle this use permit. She has put a lot of work and a lot of effort, not only into this, the College of the Albemarle Building, but into the entire campus. And so when you see the conceptual plans and you see the vision for this campus, and I think the manager would agree with me, Holly's been very instrumental in that, and she's worked very hard to get us where we're at today. So I'm going to let, turn it over to Holly for the use permit.
Welcome, Ms. Holly.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, tonight, we are here for a special use permit, and this is specifically for the animal shelter, skate park, COA Aviation and Training, Technical Training Center, fire rescue station, and forestry building. And those are all adjacent to the airport and the Cooperative Extension Center. And I think you guys have seen this site and plans quite often recently. The zoning adjacent is agricultural, general business, and heavy manufacturing. Most of the surrounding land uses are wooded, farmland, and along Maple Road, they're single-family residential dwellings. You typically see, we reference the land use plan. In this case, the Maple Barco Small Area Plan is what we're looking at for consistency. And the Maple Barco Plan defines this area as employment. This just means that these areas are anticipated for land uses that could generate economic activity or job growth. And it, you would see uses such as offices, technology research and development, and also aviation-related industries, which is consistent with what we're proposing for the site. The Maple Barco Plan also outlines that the campus should develop, or the area should develop, an employment in campus-like settings with linked open space, and we're also trying to achieve that with this master plan and these uses. I'm not going to specifically review each of the findings, they can be covered in the staff report. I'll be happy to answer specific questions if you have any. The Maple Barco Plan does have specific policies, and I'll reference those, ED 1, which talks about promoting and establishing aviation-related businesses in the Maple Commerce Park and surrounding areas, and also Policy TR 2, which references the need for interconnectivity to provide access to roadways and to link these employment centers to what we hope will be service areas in the future for businesses, restaurants, other type of uses like that. The Technical Review Committee recommended approval, as well as the planning staff, and this was heard at the October 11th Planning Board meeting, and it was unanimously approved. That's all I have at this time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mrs. White?
Just, I think the staff's done a wonderful job developing the plan for this area, and as long as Dan can make it pay for itself and everything, we're in good shape.
I wish everyone could have seen the master plan that you so eloquently presented at the extension building a couple, three weeks ago, when we laid out the drawings for the Aviation Training Center. This area is something, folks, that Currituck County is going to be proud of in the future. I mean, we're going to have educational facilities, we have the school systems that are talking with the COA, trying to integrate how we can do some things with our high school students as well. I mean, this is going to be a jewel. This is going to be a jewel. I want to thank all of you all that's had any, Dan, Ike, staff, everyone, who has worked so hard to get this thing pulled together. I think you've done a wonderful job, and thank you so much.
Thank you. I would like to add that on Tuesday, November the 15th, we're going to be having an open house to specifically look at the recreational elements on this site, some of which are outside of the S U P tonight. But the public's invited to come out from 6:00 to 8:00 at Cooperative Extension to look at our plans and provide us some feedback on those recreation elements.
Funny you mention that. Mrs. Gilbert and myself, my granddaughter was playing softball all weekend over in Newport News, and we were talking to one another yesterday. She come and attended the game, and just, go ahead, I'm not going to steal your thunder. You were the one who brought all this stuff.
I was just commenting to Dan that, you know, this is the second or third time that I've been to the Newport News Sports Complex in the Denby area of Newport News, and I envision the same type of facility in Currituck and what it would bring to our county as far as, you know, I'm on the ex officio on the Recreation Board and also on the Airport Board. So I am looking forward to partnering with the economic development and really, this, I just, I'm ecstatic and excited about this, and, you know, I'm ready to start digging. So, Dan, make it happen.
Thank you, Mary.
This has the potential of becoming a destination point in Currituck County.
Yes. Thank you. No one wishes to speak? Then I will close the public hearing, and I will ask the board for a motion.
Move for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, in fact, I'd like to make one comment.
Yes, sir, please.
germane to the subject but not part of the hearing. There's also an exploration of the possibility of expanding what may be the sheriff's shooting range adjacent to this parcel, just south of the water plant on the west side of Maple Road. There's a website up, curritucks shootingrange.com, also a Facebook page. If you're interested in the establishment of a shooting range, which would be perhaps a shooting sports park, please go to that website and make your feelings known. There's a place to sign up for a newsletter on there. But I think that would be a great enhancement to that. Sheriff's range has to move because of the expansion of the airport.
I would also like to make note that my motion for approval included the staff's recommendations and finding of facts.
So be. Next, item number seven is a presentation by North Carolina Power on transmission line I welcome you again, folks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Michael Thompson, I'm with Dominion North Carolina Power. Have with me several people this evening. I'd like to introduce Lee Rozier, who is our manager of operations, also Steve Saunders, who is our manager of construction, and then we have Larry Carter, who is an expert on technical items. But our two presenters tonight will be Jonathan Schultis and Stephanie Harrington. And with that, I'll turn it over to them and then be available for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman, commissioners, and staff. As I make my effort to go ahead and get started with the PowerPoint, I want to just state that the main reason we're here tonight is to promote our open house, which will be held next Wednesday, and some of you may have seen the ad in the Elizabeth City Daily Advance. I'll go ahead and pass it around. We had the opportunity this afternoon to swing by the community center, and at Commissioner Etheridge's suggestion two years ago, Dominion held an open house there in 2009. It was really interesting for John and I to come back two years later and see the tremendous change.
For the public's, when is this again, and what time?
Absolutely. The Dominion Open House will be held at the Co-op Extension Center next Wednesday, November 16th, and the hours will be 3:00 to 7:00. This is an open house format. We'll have content experts there to answer questions. In the past, some people will come into these events and stay 10 or 15 minutes, some folks will want to stay an hour and a half and speak to everyone. We chose this timeframe after speaking with Mr. Woody about the community and the times that we thought would be appropriate. Typically, we're a little later in the day, but he suggested that we go ahead and set up earlier in the afternoon. So we'll be there for a full four hours. So we really do welcome the community property owners that they have received letters, and we'll talk about our community outreach, but I just want to state that upfront. That's the main reason we're here. Specifically, though, Jonathan and I want to talk to you about an electric transmission infrastructure project. And this particular project is necessitated by need for two reasons. I work in the electric transmission group with planners like Larry Carter, and usually projects fall in two broad categories. Either the community is growing, and there's a need to deliver more power from where the power is generated to where the power is needed, or there are reliability concerns, either at the national or state level, for the infrastructure that's there. The project we're going to talk to you about tonight actually fits both of those categories. Here you have a map of the high voltage electric grid that Dominion is supplying to this part of the North Carolina Transmission System. I apologize if the colors are difficult for you to see, but basically, the lines that you see in blue represent 230,000 volts, or 230 KV, as you might hear us or see us refer to the high voltage lines. The red lines represent the 115,000 volt, or the 115 KV lines. And those triangles that you see on the map represent the substations. Those are the facilities that are behind gated fences where we transmit the, we transfer, rather, the power from the high voltage lines to the local distribution network for businesses and homes. Our challenge in this particular area, as many of you are fully aware, and as it's been evidenced in earlier discussions tonight, is that this particular area of North Carolina is experiencing tremendous growth. We've seen growth, literally 30% growth in the last decade. And what Larry Carter and the planners that I work with back in Richmond have shown in their forecasts is that by 2015, we need to provide additional transmission into the area. And that's the growth factor. But then there's also the other factor in the reliability side of the equation. And the North American Electric Reliability Corporation has mandated that we have certain standards that we have to follow. And one in particular is the 300 megawatt rule. And I'd like to just take a moment to give you, in my choice of words, how to describe it, and if you'd like a more technical selection of words, Mr. Carter can address those. But basically, we have this main line that you'll see in that oval from the existing Shawboro substation down to Idlet and further on down into the Outer Banks area. That particular line is really the backbone into the area. And when we look at opportunities for contingencies, for example, what if there were to be a problem with equipment in one of those substations? Or what if there were to be an outage on a portion of that line? Then what that would do is cause an overload of over 300 megawatts, and that's really the breaking point, if you will. To follow NERC standards, we have to have redundancy, we have to have a backup plan. And then, secondly, when we just look at the load that we see coming in 2015 and beyond, we see that these lines are going to be overloaded. Even if there were no equipment failures, the line itself is just eventually going to be overloaded. And it's because of that that Dominion is proposing to develop a plan for a new transmission line, and it would be a plan that we would develop and work with the North Carolina Utility Commission for approval. Another way to think about 300 megawatts is that equates to about 75,000 homes. So as part of our plan, we developed a routing study. Jonathan Schultis is going to come up to you, come up and talk a little bit more about the routing and the permitting section, and then I'll come back and talk to you more about community outreach, and then we'll entertain questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As my coworker, Ms. Harrington, noted, my name is Jonathan Schultis, and I'm responsible for the routing and permitting for transmission capital projects for Dominion. I'm going to talk to you this evening a little bit about the process that we have to go through in order to certificate a new transmission line of this voltage, the process that we go through when we look to select a route, and a little bit of the permitting aspect that we have to go to, go through in order to get the route built. As you can see here, this is probably a map that you are all familiar with. This is the existing transmission line corridor between the Shawboro substation and the Idlet substation. Right now, there is a double circuit 230,000 volt line, or 230 KV line, which essentially, I'm sure you guys are familiar, see it at... which essentially, I'm sure you guys are familiar, see it, see it almost every day driving down that 158 corridor. There are brown transmission structures that have six wires on them. And the three wires on the top are one 230 KV circuit and the wires on the bottom are another 230 KV circuit. This is the route that we've identified and, or studying in order to include this new transmission line. Now, as we've mentioned a couple of times, this route is being proposed at 230 KV. According to North Carolina, North Carolina General Statute 62-101, all lines over 161 KV require North Carolina Public Utilities Commission approval. This is no small feat by any stretch of the imagination. Once we look to apply with the NCUC in order to get a line like this approved, there's a tremendous amount of regulation that we must go through. And that regulation and hearings and everything associated with the NCUC hopefully yields what's called a certificate of environmental compatibility and public convenience and necessity. And that essentially is the state's blessing, the NCUC's blessing, to build the line. So in order to get from the point we are now, talking to you all about a transmission line, to the point at which we have a line certificated, Dominion puts in a lot of effort in order to make sure that we have reached out to as many people as we can and included that into the application. Ms. Harrington mentioned earlier some of the aspects of the need with regard to NERC reliability criteria, with regard to load, and that's one major part of the application. The part that, that my position is most concerned with is, is the routing, environmental permitting and compatibility portion. With the NCUC being the main state authority that we go through, the application encompasses, at least on the environmental side, essentially our, our take on why we chose the route we did, why we looked at where we did, and the work that we did in order to get there. This includes a number of meetings. We've already had an opportunity to sit down with Chairman Idlet. We had an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Woody, certain members from his staff and the airport manager. We're looking in the near future to meet with the DOT in Raleigh. We're also looking to meet with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and state environmental folks, as well as in the near future, environmental folks with the county. We compile a significant amount of data. We put that data into a report. And we use those, we use those data points in order to choose the route that we want to take. Now with transmission lines, which is unlike gas and, and oil lines, they're mainly state regulated. There is one federal guideline. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, does have some jurisdiction over electric transmission lines, but very little involvement in this process here. And FERC guideline number one is that we follow existing right-of-way corridors where possible. And that's why we're looking at this corridor here and we're hoping that we can work with this corridor and not have to deviate from the corridor and create another transmission line through Currituck County.
So Vanessa, what you're saying is use the existing corridor that's already, where you already have right-of-way that's there today?
Yes, sir. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, that's guideline number one. And most, most state statutes want you to look at that first. So that's absolutely what we're going to do.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
What, what type of things would cause you to have to deviate from what you already have? I mean, that's pretty substantial, what you already have. So what could possibly cause a deviation?
I'm really glad you asked that question and I'm going to get to that here in a little bit. So let me, let me get through here. Let me talk about the right-of-way that we got. And, and I will certainly get to the rest of your questions in this presentation. So as I mentioned and as Ms. Harrington mentioned before, we're looking to install a new single circuit 230 KV monopole next to the existing H-frames. Potentially, in some areas, we may need to widen the corridor. That may be a possibility that we run into. And ultimately, we hope to have this line energized by 2015. Talk to you a little bit about the right-of-way. We have 120 feet of right-of-way right now. In some places, the existing structures go down the center line. Some of them, they're offset from the center line. In cases where it's offset from the center line, we may need to look at widening the corridor in order to get the clearances required for the structures. They're mandated by federal reliability, by federal liability conditions. We are still very much in the conceptual phase of this line. We're not sure where we would need to widen the right-of-way with any certainty yet, but this is, this, there is the potential to need to do that along the corridor. Just a couple more items on this corridor here. It is located entirely in Currituck County. And it is generally parallel to US 158 to the entire length. And that's why we consider it very important to speak to the, to the DOT. I understand they have some 158 realignment concerns. There is a crossing of the intercoastal waterway where our right-of-way gets even smaller than where it is now. And that is, that's the jurisdiction of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And I'll tell you, there is a very significant permitting process that we'll have to look forward to in working with them. And we're hoping to, in December, I have a meeting with the Corps down in Washington, North Carolina. We're hoping to initiate some of the conversation on the requirements that would go along with that. As you all are aware, the corridor is generally rural. It's straddled by wetlands for a lot of the corridor. And wetlands are a very, very precious thing to state environmental agencies and the Corps of Engineers. And we'll certainly have to work with them for that. There are smaller portions, Currituck County High School, that the line bisects the area by the airport, which is evidenced by the earlier presentation. It's certainly a developing area and a highlight for the county, certainly. And areas where other right-of-way corridors may be considered is where we're looking. And, and we just can't either get the width that we would need in order to accommodate the structure or where we would need to, to move the right-of-way corridor.
I guess what I'm saying is you would just like add an additional to what's already there. You're not talking about a whole new route.
Yes, sir. We're, we're hoping that we can do, we're hoping that in, we will keep the whole new route in its entirety, all 11 miles on the existing corridor and add to what's already there. There may be an opportunity. The intercoastal waterway is a squeeze. And like I said, this is very conceptual. And we're kind of at the mercy of the Corps there where there might be some room for deviation, but right now I don't think so. But these are, these are the kind of things that we have to look at. And ultimately, these are the kind of things that we have to submit to the North Carolina Public Utilities Commission. It's incumbent upon us to submit to them the most complete application that we can and show them that we're proposing this route staying on this corridor for these reasons. And if areas in the application you show us deviating from the route, we'd say that these were ultimately considered. Maybe they were looked at very closely for various environmental reasons from the feedback that we got from state, local, and federal agencies. And this is why we've made the determination that we've had. And we need to explore all those and do our due diligence for the NCUC in our routing report. So these are things that are going to come up and you're going to see, as I said, this is a very, very comprehensive application that goes for review.
When you say you widen the corridor, so you're talking about having to buy some land?
There is, there is the potential, there is the potential. And certainly, I, I can't commit to where that would be at this stage of the game. It's not acquiring land like fee property, like buying property. It's acquiring easement rights.
Would you explain, I mean, this, this transmission line, we'll go across the sound again, correct?
Well, we're not, we're, this line is proposed to, to go from Shawboro to Idlet. It does not have sound.
It would not be a new line in the sound, okay?
No. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Go back to your picture you had with the, the poles.
This one or this?
I'm assuming the one on the right is, will be the new.
Yes, sir. The existing structures are the, the H-frames. That's the, the technical term for those that have the, the two poles and are, are more horizontal. And the new structures would be the single circuit.
Is this similar to what you, what you did down in Dare County in Naggshead, Kill Devil Hills? Where you put, they put an extra line in, put new poles?
I, I will say that, that it's similar in that they're both monopoles. They both are the single monopole, kind of like that cell phone tower, though significantly shorter. The line that you're referring to is 115,000 volts. This is going to be 230,000 volts, but...
The concept is the same. You've got one pole right next, next to the other one.
Yes, sir.
Just like they did. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Come to Shawboro and look at the line from Shawboro to, I guess, Portsmouth?
What's that?
The, the line that comes to Shawboro from Portsmouth is a two-pole setup right now.
Yeah, there's, I, I, I believe that the, the right-of-way corridor you're referring to does have a, a double pole setup on one side and a single pole setup on the other side. Yes, the structure configuration is a little bit different, but similar in theory, certainly.
Can I ask, why, why do two separate lines other than maybe redundancy or protection? Why not do a 500 KV line?
You know, I, I could answer that question, but I will, I will allow the, the transmission planner, this is, this is really his gig to kind of, kind of answer that. Would you like to have the answer to that now? Or shall I, shall we conclude our presentation and come back to it?
You can finish and come back to it because you would only be talking about one set of poles possibly.
Oh, so, so your question is can they consolidate everything that's there into one structure? All right. We can certainly provide you a, a technical answer to that question, sir. Absolutely.
I had a question related to that too. I assume it's line height problem that you've got to go to a separate pole. You can't go any lower because of federally mandated requirements for height off ground?
My understanding is, is yes, we do have clearance requirements that we have to meet. And those are, those are mandated federally. And as, as Mr. Carter will, will explain in, in better detail, the, the separate structure is also because of the 300 megawatt rule, serving that much load, they, they want it on separate structures. In case there's a structure failure on the one, the whole load isn't lost from a structure failure. But he will go into more detail on that and certainly correct me if I didn't get it exactly right. The community benefits of this line include adding, adding needed capacity. I was doing some research before I came here and I found it particularly interesting. The population growth in, in Currituck County alone was 30% between census years, between 2000 and 2010. And the U.S. Census Bureau designates Currituck County as the 72nd fastest growing county in the entire country. So things are happening here. They certainly are. And some of this infrastructure is, is a reflection of that. As Ms. Harrington noted, in addition to capacity needs, there are NERC standards, North American Electric Reliability standards. These are, these are standards that we need to follow across the grid. The grid is shared, you know, among not just Dominion North Carolina Power, but in, in Virginia and, and all other places along the east coast. So those that operate transmission systems there do have to adhere to certain standards to make sure that the load is reliable. And you guys will be able to flip the switch and be able to get electricity. We are going to take, take advantage of the existing corridor wherever possible and hopefully for the entire length. And that's pursuant to federal regulations as well as certainly the state. And this project will ultimately improve overall reliability for our customers here in North Carolina. I will, I'll finish up here on this top piece before I hand it back to Ms. Harrington. But there is, as I mentioned, a, a number of outreach that we do. And it's not just the state and federal agencies, as I mentioned, and, and local agencies like your planning department. But it's also to elected officials and community stakeholders as we get information. And certainly, as you all request information, we, we want to be able to give it to you. So as I mentioned, the NCUC application process is a large process. And as, as we go through that and as we glean more information about Currituck and some of the constraints that go along with that, we want to try to be as transparent as we can. And there's a certain level of public outreach that we're committed to. And I'll let Ms. Harrington expand on that. I appreciate your time.
I have one question.
Certainly.
One of the things I kind of thought was a little interesting in one of our, one of the, the time that you and Dan and myself and all sat down for a little while and talked about it. What would have been the impact if this new transmission line had have been in place when this latest hurricane come up the coast? What would have been the impact to the citizens in Currituck County?
Well, I'm, I'm under the understanding that if this line were in place at the time, there was, there were certain outages, particularly over on the coastal side, that may not have happened if this line was in place during the hurricane. Thank you all.
I happen to be working the storm center during Irene. And because of the outage where we had it north of the tap of Idlet, definitely this particular line, if it had been in service, could have shortened the duration of outages. Now, honestly, if the issue with the hurricane had been south of the Idlet tap, this line that we're presenting, proposing tonight, it would not have impacted the duration of the outage. But it just so happened that Irene is a real live example of when you have redundancy, you can shorten the outages if and when they do occur. We are one month into a six-month process of preparing the NCUC application. We don't intend to file until May 15th. And the open house that we're going to have next week is really only the first one. We've already booked the Co-op Extension Facility for another open house on Tuesday, January 24th. And that's when we plan to come back to the community. And when we've, you know, finalized our plans and gotten more from the engineers about where and when and how and if we need to expand the right-of-way and where the route would be. But we did send letters to about 450 property owners. There's, there's only about 50 property owners that are directly impacted by this transmission line. There's 70 or 80 parcels, but some of the property owners own multiple parcels. So letters went out, ads appeared last Wednesday. They'll appear again this Wednesday. We're here tonight. Hopefully, folks are getting the word about our outreach. One tool that's been very well received on previous projects are, is our website. There's a website devoted specifically to this project. And I don't know if any of you've had the opportunity to visit it, but it is up and running. You can go to www.dom.com, type in Shawboro and see maps and whatnot. I update that website all the time. It's a dynamic tool and it's been very useful. If there are any questions here tonight that the team that came with us answers, and I think that it's a good Q and A, I'll add that. If there are any questions we can't answer because we didn't bring that particular expert, we'll be constantly adding to our Q and A on the website. And then, of course, the open house itself. The open house, I have to say, has been also a very useful tool for community outreach because people can come in and speak one-on-one to folks about the transmission line, the need, real estate, all those questions. We're going to have an entire team. It just won't be the four of us. But we'll have an entire project team there for those, for that time, for people to learn more. In looking at potential open house locations, it, it made sense to use the Co-op Facility again because of the proximity to the line itself. And our target schedule, everything is, is all headed towards June 2015. That's really what's driving us for being here tonight. This line needs to be in service and energized in June 2015 in order to meet those planning guidelines. Working back from that, we would need to start construction in January of 2013. It takes about a year for the NCUC process. So that's why we're looking to formalize and submit our application with the NCUC in March. And that brings us to the outreach that we're here tonight to, to begin. So I, I would love to answer any technical questions. And while Larry, if you want to, Larry, you want to come up and answer some. But I will, I, I will, from just a communication standpoint, say that one of the key reasons that we would not necessarily go to the NCUC with a brand-new high voltage line of a high, high voltage to replace what we have is because of this first map. And I'm going to bring it back for Larry's discussion. From a constructability standpoint, because the lines that are in service now are feeding so many customers, this would not be an opportunity to wreck and rebuild. We'd need to keep the infrastructure that we have now and add to it. So I'll let Mr. Carter address any other technical questions you might have.
I, I have one question.
Sure.
We hear a lot about electromagnetic stuff nowadays. As far as the health hazard is concerned, I think it's a legitimate question.
Absolutely, absolutely. Dominion takes health concerns very seriously. And we do know folks are often concerned about electromagnetic fields that are generated from our facilities, whether they're a substation or a high voltage line, et cetera. On our website, if you go to dom.com, type in EMF as it's commonly referred to, we have a plethora of information and research to address those concerns. And next week, I will have experts to answer folks' questions about electromagnetic fields. As part of our application process, we will be required to do some sophisticated modeling and... and engineering tabulations to look at what are the EMF fields that are there in existence now, and what would they be when the new line, if it were approved, was built and energized. I don't know the technical features of this particular line, but I will say that I've worked on a lot of other projects when sometimes when we add new lines, I know this doesn't sound so intuitive, but sometimes the EMF fields will actually go down because more lines cancel each other sometimes. But anyway, those calculations will be conducted, and we will be able to address anyone's concerns or questions about EMF. Another piece that we'll have at our open houses is literature and information, which basically will link to other studies that have been done, third-party outside of Dominion and outside of the electric industry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my concern, just so. Everything is vetted, and everybody has opportunity to hear everything that's involved. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Your help, sir.
So the question was, can we build a 500 KV line?
Well, if we built the 500 KV line to replace the existing 230 KV lines, was that the question? We'd still be in the same situation we're in right now. The problem is that the 230 lines are on the same structures, and if something happens, we lose over 300 megawatts, which violates the criteria that we have. So if you replaced it with a single 500 line, you would still have the same problem. So the new line actually takes load off of those two lines, and if we lose that, those two lines were below the criteria. So that's the reason we need to have a completely separate line from the existing line, tower line that we have right there.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Any questions? Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Do we receive our power directly from Virginia, or does it come from the Elizabeth City area?
The transmission system is a network system. There's generation all throughout the network system, and as it flows, it varies as to how it flows, but in this way, it actually flows south from the system itself. So to say it comes from one place or another is really, you know, you can't say it that way.
All right.
It's a network system.
The only thing I got to say is it just proves what I've always known. Charlborough powers the county.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may add to that answer that was given, please?
Yes, sir, please.
We have three power plants in the state of North Carolina, two are hydro, Roanoke Rapids, and Gaston. We also have a Panda Rosemary combined cycle plant there in Roanoke Rapids as well. None of those three units by itself or combined could generate the needs that we have here in the northeast part of North Carolina. We have what is called a generation portfolio with Dominion. We have plants from North Carolina to New York and from the Atlantic Ocean to Indiana, including renewable wind turbines and solar. That generation portfolio puts nuclear first. It is not the least cost, but it is the first because it's more difficult to ramp those plants up and down when you need to adjust your generation needs. Second, you have hydro. Then you have coal, oil, gas, and combustion turbine, and what is called purchase and interchange with other utilities, long-term contracts that we have with them. So there are a menagerie of generation plants that we have in that area that I just described, and that electricity flows to North Carolina when we need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gilbert?
Yeah, I just have a question on the discussions that you all have had, and I'm not sure if this would be directed to the manager or to our staff, but in consideration of the Mid-County Bridge coming in, in the same area, in the Idlet area, how has that been taken into consideration on the needs that we may have for power, you know, for the bridge?
Well, as a matter of fact, after meeting with Mr. Woody and a couple of folks in his department, he passed on to me some very good contacts in the DOT and the Turnpike Authority. And in December, December 14th, myself and my team are going to head over to Raleigh. I think Mr. Woody had some interest in being there, too, and we're going to meet with the Turnpike Authority and the DOT and kind of get a better understanding with where the bridge is going to be and how that's going to work out, and how we can have this transmission line corridor work with that with regard to the new line.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was in some consideration at some point in time because it is in the same locale.
Absolutely. Everything that you got here along this corridor is in consideration, everything. We take a very close look at it. Like I said, from environmental to transportation to cultural resources, to all of that, and we study it very closely.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank you folks for coming again this evening and presenting this again. I know the last time you were here, the PowerPoint was not available to play, so thank you again.
Thank you. And just one more plug, because we want the communication to be two ways. When folks visit our website, there's a Contact Us tab, and there's a simple email. It's powerline@dom.com. So if any of you, if anyone calls and says, "I want more information about this Dominion Power line," it's an email that I literally check daily, powerline@dom.com. So we'll be checking that and responding to incoming inquiries as they go through the next five months. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute recess. I need to take a minute. Okay, next we have item number eight, and it's a resolution opposing Dominion Power rate increase. And Mr. Peter Bishop is asked to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am here before you this evening to share a few thoughts and opinions on the most recent Dominion Power rate increase. Notification was given to the North Carolina Utilities Commission on August 25th. Great day, because that also happens to be my birthday, since we're on the topic of birthdays this evening. But a not-so-great day for the rate-paying customers of Dominion, North Carolina Power, as on an average, it looks like residential customers using 1,000 kilowatts of energy in their homes will be looking at about a 9.5% increase. And that is not to a general rate, that is to a set of fuel rates that Dominion uses to recover fuel costs that they overcharged or undercharged in previous years and expected losses that they may have in the future on those same fuel costs. Now, I understand that I have plenty of Dominion Power professionals here behind me that can possibly rebut or provide more detail on some of these specifics that I will provide to you, but I'll start with a little bit of history with rate changes and how the Utilities Commission handles these. You'll remember last year, this board vehemently opposed, well, at that time was a 14.5% general rate increase of Dominion, and that was the general rate, the base rate that we all see in our power bills that gives us the first number. Now, if anybody's taken a close look at those power bills, you'll find, number one, they're incredibly difficult to read, and number two, if you can read them, you don't always know exactly what you're paying for and where you're paying for it. So I'll try and make it simple. Within that fuel rate, what we're talking about for the 2011 rate filing that happened on the 25th this year, there are three pieces of your rate that include fuel information. There's a fuel base rate that's included in the general base rate per kilowatt-hour, what you pay, and then there are two riders. There's a rider A that recovers cost, I believe that is over or less than what was charged during, within that first non-base fuel rate, so that covers anything that that first fuel charge didn't cover. And there's a second fuel charge that recovers costs from previous years that they didn't recover enough from customers for the fuel that they purchased or the other power that they purchased from the different network grids that they talked about before. Now, in these cases, what we're seeing specifically is that 9.5% increase in that fuel rate, and that fuel rate is allowed to be increased on an annual basis. The state statute and the Utilities Commission allow investor-owned utilities to recoup fuel costs that they incur or purchase power costs that they incur back to their customers. So if Dominion Power, in the summertime, in a very hot summer that we had a year ago, doesn't have enough power on hand, they will purchase power or purchase fuel to generate more power to meet that demand. Now, what they'll do with those extra costs is pass it right on to the consumer, to the customer on the other end, and I believe it's to the tune of 85% if they don't have specific fuel costs or 100% of those costs are recovered if whoever they're buying the power from or the fuel from gives them those exact costs. So to recap, in the state of North Carolina, our legislature and Utilities Commission allows investor-owned utilities to charge you for the power that they buy at their discretion. So that's what we're seeing in this next year, is an increase in the way that they get fuel charges back from you and how they're projecting them into the future for the next year. Now, what this filing on the 25th shows us is that the Utilities Commission, beg your pardon, Dominion, had a $13.66 million shortfall in their fuel charges to customers in the last calendar year. Now, back in 2010, they actually overcharged consumers and customers $27 million. So two years ago, they overcharged $27 million. This year, they undercharged $13.6 million, and they're asking for $36 million in additional revenues in the next year to recover some of those rates that they didn't get. So you're seeing it's a bit of a roller coaster ride when it comes to fuel. And don't get me wrong, I don't blame the utilities because you have fluctuating costs of fossil fuels, fluctuating demand periods. You know, in the summer, it's nice and hot, you're going to use more power. In the winter, it's super cold, you're going to use more power. I'm sort of wondering right now why the utility isn't a little better at this by now and why we're seeing these great 13, 20 million gaps in between years. Certainly, nobody's a good weatherman around here, but we can forecast a little bit better than these huge gaps that we're seeing from time to time. Another interesting fact about this utility rating, now, we're talking about 11.5% increase for North Carolina customers in just this fuel rate surcharge. Now, what Dominion Virginia Power did in Virginia earlier this year with this same filing of a large increase, they decided to spread that fuel rate increase over two different calendar years so that the brunt of the impact of that, in our case, 11.5%, wasn't felt in the first year. Now, is Dominion going to offer this same luxury to North Carolina rate-paying customers? It appears they are not. It doesn't look like they're going to spread this 11.5% fuel rate charge over two years. They're going to have us do it in one year. Another nice thing that Virginia did for their home state, Virginia, was didn't charge any interest on extending that over two years rather than one year to recover those fuel charges. So it looks like they're giving Virginia customers a little better deal than they're giving North Carolina customers, and I personally, as a North Carolina rate-paying customer, take issue with that. And then finally, although I have some issues with the way the Utilities Commission and the state legislature allows fuel buyback, it really is a little ridiculous. I mean, I don't ask the county manager for extra mileage increases if the gas price from one day of travel increases 10 cents more. I mean, I'd love it if we did that here in the county and were able to get a little more money, and now we're able to pass those costs along, but that's not how it works. When we tow our boat to see some family and the fuel cost goes up, or we, you know, if I'm riding Amtrak and the fuel cost goes up, I don't get a tax at the end of my ride that says, "Oh, you owe us $20 more" because the fuel was more expensive. So I'm a little confused and a little upset with the way that the Utilities Commission and legislature allows utilities to charge back to us. But greatly, I don't think that we're necessarily getting the best deal in this, mostly because Virginia customers are being treated differently than North Carolina customers. And granted, there's a lot more investment, a lot more customer base in Virginia, but we just heard about this great improvement project we're going to have. We're going to have redundancy now. We're trying to build a customer base here. However, we're being treated differently than the other utilities customers. So I'll just go ahead and close by recapping some of the facts of the case. We're looking at for residential customers about a 9.5% increase for 1,000 of kilowatts of use in a home in next year's billing cycle, and Dominion's trying to recoup $13.66 million of undercharges with $36 million in additional charges in the next year. Now, the math does work out in the end, according to the Utilities Commission and Dominion, but the case remains that we're being treated separately. These fuel costs are going to keep coming because they're allowed annually to keep asking for additional fuel surcharges to come, and you'll see that you have a resolution before you to oppose this power rate increase, and I'll certainly take any questions that you have at this time.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Bishop?
When they overcharged, did we get a refund?
Yes, we did. Yes, we most certainly did. Last year, 2010, that $27 million combined, I think it was a 9% rate increase, it ended up being about a 5% reduction in every customer's bills last year. So yes, to Dominion's credit, when they overcharge you, they also credit it back to your account.
Any further questions? I have two comments related to the management of their cost. One is, it's a pretty well-known fact that not only Dominion, which by the way ranks better in profitability than 2/3 of all the electric utilities in the United States, did a little research on their investment returns, and they're predicting a higher-than-usual dividend this year. They're going to raise their dividends. So it's good for the shareholders. If you have a problem with the rates, go buy some of their stock, and then, you know, you'll make up for it on that end. What they do sometimes is they will actually go buy power deliberately at a higher rate because they can pass that cost through to you, and it saves wear and tear on their equipment generating power. So why not? Why not take advantage of it if they can pass it through when, in fact, they'd have to use their own equipment and would not make as much of a profit margin on it? The other thing is, too, that it's pretty well-known that in most industries, you can hedge your future costs by either buying futures related to whatever fuels you're using, which I'm sure they do. It's just they're going to go with their actual cost experience rather than looking at an adjusted cost based on those hedges. So I'm saying we're looking at an industry that's making a larger-than-normal profit margin for what's going on in the economy. Their profit margins, allowed by statute, are not indicated, are not indexed to any of the leading economic indicators, which I think they should be. Commissioner Feathridge and I talked about this past week. And when the economy's down and Treasury bills are returning substantially less than the dividends Dominion is paying, something is out of kilter, and that's one of the reasons I feel like this should be resisted.
And actually, Mr. Rora, two facts that you mentioned are presented in public staff testimony. A representative for Nucor Steel spoke to the inequity issue about the billing between Virginia and North Carolina, and then another public staff member, Mr. Kenny Ellis, was questioning the forced shutdowns of two nuclear facilities and whether or not those were prudent or imprudent shutdowns that led to overcharging for purchased power or purchased fuel.
Any further questions for Mr. Bishop?
Well, I certainly have a concern with, you know, when I see buildings vacant in Currituck County and people in foreclosure and elderly and people struggling to buy groceries or medications or power, I certainly cannot condone a rate increase on anyone, especially when, according to my information, Dominion had a 10.3% profit margin last year, a net income of $392 million, and a return on its equity of 12.68%. I mean, that's unheard of, except, I don't know, I guess...
I'm too poor to have any stocks all the time.
Yeah, I don't know where you get that from, and then you can do it by statute?
Statute guarantee of profit.
And I just cannot imagine us not resisting this rate increase, and hopefully, the folks at home will see this, and they'll start making calls to the Utilities Commission as well, because this is just, it's not something that we can not speak out against.
Well, I think Mr. Bishop hit on the point that perhaps this is something that needs to be addressed at the state level as well. It may be something within our Utilities Commission that we need to do a little tweaking with, and perhaps we've got the leadership in the House and Senate now to do that.
I think it's an article in the paper reported that the Utilities Commission did have a hearing on that and suggested something like a 5.5% or 4.5% increase.
That's for Duke, yeah.
And so it has been looked at, you know, a little, but nothing has been, you know, decided.
Well, Duke Power had applied for a 15% rate increase, and a consumer group came back and recommended 4.5% based on the numbers that they came up with, so.
I think that would be probably much fair. Of course, you know, I look at the prices of everything around me. Everything's going up, except people's salaries. Anybody else have that problem?
Well, some people's salaries are going up.
What salary? There you go.
Yeah, the guys managing these companies, their salaries are going up.
That's right. Plenty of big bonuses there.
I certainly am going to recommend approval, this Board of Commissioners, and with that approval, when is the Utilities Commission supposed to make their decision?
Sir, the public hearing is going to be on Wednesday of this week in Raleigh at 9:00 AM, and I will actually be presenting these comments in a formalized form at that meeting. The decision, I believe, usually happens in December, January, January 12th or 11th, I believe, these new rates would take effect.
Well, this certainly needs to go with you with their approval, and it also certainly needs to be sent to the other boards of Commissioners in the service area tomorrow so that they have time to work up and oppose the same thing.
I don't know if you have a response in fairness. I will certainly give you the opportunity to come forward and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'm not sure that I heard Peter Fisher's title.
He's the... Go ahead.
He's the, uh, go ahead.
Bishop, by the way, Director of Economic Development.
Bishop, excuse me. And you're the one that came and argued against the Dominion net decrease last year, 5.1 percent in Roanoke Rapids?
Representing the Board of Commissioners, yes, sir.
Good, good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a couple of things that, um, Mr. Bishop indicated. Talked about these great fluctuations in prices of, uh, electricity. I'd like to say to you that the, um, great utility that I represent had a hurricane, had tornadoes, an earthquake, and two of those nuclear power plants that were alluded to by Mr. Bishop is, uh, prudency on being shut down. We had nothing to do with that. The mother nature took care of that, along with a little help from the NRC. I'd like to also say that this, um, 14 percent that, uh, Mr. Bishop indicated is what we filed for in January of 2010. That is in fact true. However, what is also in fact true is that was adjusted by the North Carolina Utilities Commission to 2.9 percent. In closing, I'd like to just address, since I was not aware that this was going to occur this evening, or I would have had our expert, uh, like Mr. Bishop here as well. Um, I have in front of me, uh, based on some comments that were made from the last meeting that we attended, the authorized returns for my utility, my investor-owned utility Dominion Resources, or Dominion North Carolina Power, for the year 2000 through 2004, or actually through April of 2005, the authorized rate of return was 11.8 percent. I will share with you that from April of 2005 until April of 2010, our rates were frozen. We could not change them if we wanted to. And in that period of time, we earned 9.7 percent in 2005, we earned 6.4 percent in 2006, we earned 3.1 percent in 2007, we earned 4.3 percent in 2008, 2009 was 7.1, and 2010 6.6, a far cry from the authorized rate of return, not guaranteed rate of return, by the North Carolina Utilities Commission. I'm available for comment, and, uh, thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any, any questions or comments?
One, one question. Who froze those rates?
The North Carolina Utilities Commission.
Okay, thank you.
We had, do you want me to elaborate on that a little bit, Commissioner? The reason for that was in the year of 2002, with 11.8 percent authorized rate of return, Dominion through economies of scale, mild weather and very few storms, including hurricanes, earned 17.5 percent, and we had to return that money and had to have our rates frozen from, uh, April of 2005 until April of 2010 and earn what we could. In that rate case that was instituted as a result of that, uh, that came out of 2003, the issue of the, uh, authorized rate of return was not addressed, and the Commission said, "Earn what you can earn," and I just quoted to you chapter and verse what those earnings were for those particular years.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
What year was it that you talked about that you applied for a 14 percent increase and they gave you 2?
2010, and this is for fuel, Commissioner. Let's not mix apples and oranges. We're talking about fuel. What I just mentioned about the authorized return is base rates.
Okay.
In 2010, for the first time, and I'm glad you brought that up, because we went 17 years without a base rate increase. Only fuel, which is authorized to, uh, pass through to the customers, with no authorized return, zero on fuel. But for the first time in 17 years since 1993, Dominion went in for a 14 percent increase, but then later adjusted that and got a 2.9 percent increase, coupled with an 8 percent fuel decrease resulted in a 5.1 percent net decrease for our customers, which are, they are getting today for the entire calendar year. The questioner, Mr. Bishop, indicated that the rates would go into effect, he gave some date in January, it's always January 1st midnight, December 31st, that the rates authorized by the Utilities Commission after these rate increase hearings go into effect for one calendar year.
I'm trying to understand why you would apply for 14 and the Utilities Commission gives you 2. What, how were their numbers different than yours?
Again, if I had the opportunity to know that this was going on this evening, then I would have had my expert here that could answer that question, but I do not know that answer at this time.
I understand.
Thank you.
I'm trying to make it...
Yes, sir. There are adjustments throughout the year that they take into consideration. Uh, Mr. Bishop mentioned Nucor. We have the, uh, Sigfer, the Carolina Industrial Group for Fair Utility Rates, and other, uh, groups that get together, and you try to come to some balance throughout the year before this goes to hearing because you know, you may not get this, you may not get that, but if you can agree with your customers on a fair return, then sometimes you do come up with a good negotiation.
What scares me is, is you always ask for a high, "I hope you can get something in the middle."
No, I wouldn't say that's accurate. If we asked for the 14 and then we came back down as a result of that discussion with the customers and what it is that we truly needed.
I'm just saying, that's a, that's a big spread.
It is. It is quite a big spread. But again, I could get the answer for you and will submit it to the Commission.
I'm just, I'm trying to make it work, that's all.
Got you.
Well, since he's answering questions, I have one.
Sure.
Dominion Power, why or is North Carolina being treated different with the rate increases than Virginia is?
I'm glad you asked that, Commissioner O'Neill. By the way, Larry Ellis says hello.
Tell him hi.
I will, thanks. Uh, this particular question has come up many times. The last time that it came up was the, uh, deregulation, deregulation debate that was held in Raleigh at the turn of the century, 1999, 2000, and they asked that very same question. Well, Virginia is not the template for North Carolina. We're different. So, they have a different cost of service basis, and that's why they're, it's not treated differently but handled or calculated differently than Virginia is.
All right, I've got one last question.
Certainly.
Y'all have been in power a long time.
1924, North Carolina.
That's right, good while. Now, I remember you when you were VEPCO, uh, several years ago. We have had storms, snowstorms, hurricanes since the beginning of time. Don't y'all, um, put some capital reserve aside for, you mentioned that we've had storms and so forth? Don't y'all put capital reserves aside for those very events instead of it being, "We had a storm this year and now we've got to have a rate increase?" I know that, that y'all plan for those type of events and you set aside capital to fix those things. It's not like you have to have it this year because you just had a storm, is it?
That, you're absolutely correct. That is incorrect, what you're saying.
Okay.
Is, we have not filed, as I indicated just a few moments ago, for a base rate increase as a result of increased, uh, construction or infrastructure costs since 1993. So, during that period of time, I'll give you a few examples. I happen to have a copy of this with me, and some of this is storm-related and some is not. I'll start with the most recent, go backwards. The second 115 KV transmission line, Collington to Naggs Head, which is, um, now in service and has been for almost a year at this point in time, was 14.1 million dollars. We did not have a rate increase immediately after that or as a result of that. 2005 to 2007, uh, the first half of the transmission line from Kitty Hawk to Collington, I mentioned the other one was Collington and Naggs Head, and I'm working backwards, was 7.3. So, that's 21.4 million dollars. Uh, the third 230 KV transmission line to Shawboro from Fintress, I believe there was some discussion earlier, somewhere in Virginia the line came from, well, that's a place called Fintress Substation. We built a third, uh, one, uh, 230 KV transmission line to Shawboro as another conduit, if you will, of electrons for our customers and reliability aspects. And that particular, uh, transmission line was 11.8 million dollars, and that was in 2004, 2005. We'd like to have at least three, if not four or more, different transmission lines coming into the state because as you heard from Mr. Carter, if you have catastrophic events on one, you're going to have to shed a load to the other and you want to maintain their reliable service to your customers. Continuing to work backwards, in 2005, we had a Kitty Hawk 75 megavolt ampere 230 KV to 34.5 KV transformer installed, 1.2 million. There was no rate increase in 2005. In 2004, the express circuit, which we put underground from Collington to Naggs Head to help alleviate any concerns that we would lose power to our customers in the event of a catastrophic event or piece of siding, aluminum siding coming off a building in high winds throwing it into our lines, uh, that particular one was, um, 1.7 million. There was another half to that in 2003, 1.6 million. I go on and on, but I'm coming up with 63 million, 2, 63 million 280,000 dollars from 1995 to 2009, that we did not have a rate increase until 17 years later.
You know what? You've just made my point. You still made money and did all that.
Not only that, but the simple fact is that when you look at their Dominion Resources overall, not Dominion, North Carolina versus Dominion, Virginia, when you look at the company overall, they're showing increased profits every year. They're projecting increased dividends. They're doing great.
I think we're mixing apples and oranges, if you'll pardon the expression again, Commissioners.
We are, but that's because of your bookkeeping practices. You can't separate Dominion, North Carolina from Dominion, Virginia in any kind of logic that makes sense. You can do it by bookkeeping. You can do it by fact that you answer to different Utilities Commissions. But the fact is Dominion Resources encompasses all of them, and the numbers that I pulled off of your investor return statements on your various websites and the various investment houses analyses of your performance, all was Dominion Resources, which is the whole banana. And that's what we're looking at. You've got the resources in other parts of your, your company to take whatever losses might occur in, in different areas. You don't have to go in and sock it to the people where there's problems, to care, but you do that.
No, sir, we don't. I will say though, that Dominion has shown over time that we have economies of scale. We've had voluntary separation packages, and we have two different times where employees were given an opportunity to leave the company or to lose their position. And these economies scales, along with a good operation from a fine chairman of the board and 16,500 employees, has allowed us to operate in this fine fashion. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comment. Okay, we have a resolution in front of us, uh, looking for a motion.
I made a motion.
Have a second. Hold on. Favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have it. Item number nine, approval of new insurance districts for Crawford, Moayok, and Lower Currituck County. We have some fine individuals that are sitting back there in the back this evening. Uh, being a, uh, a past firefighter myself, we always like to sit in the back closer to the window in case you had to get out. But, uh, I will introduce them to you. First, we have Chief Glover, who is our Currituck County EMS Director. We have Chief Chris Daly, who is the Chief of Crawford Township Fire Department. We have, uh, James Mims, who is our current Currituck County Fire Marshal, and I didn't say current for any reason, just... We have, we have Mr. Aaron Gay, who was employed with the, uh, North Carolina Fire Service. We have Brooks Hart from Lower Currituck Fire Department. Tim Toms, also from Lower Currituck. Did I miss anyone?
Ken Farrell.
Who?
Ken Farrell.
Assistant Chief Farrell.
Assistant Chief Farrell from Crawford.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, one and all. Uh, I assume you're going to start this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, after the last presentation, we actually have, uh, some good news for you. Um, it, it's actually, uh, the timing's pretty ironic, but, uh, what we're looking at is, uh, in, in the last few years over time, the local fire chiefs and the representatives sitting in here actually have been discussing, uh, and always discuss, uh, what can they do better for the citizenry? What can they do for the constituents? Uh, how can they keep rates low? How can they do better services and those kinds of things? And this group has, over time, identified, um, certain minor changes that they can make in their districts, uh, to actually realize, uh, savings to the citizens in the county in specific areas, not all areas that we're going to talk about, uh, with their ISO rating and their insurance, their fire insurance, uh, for their homes and businesses. So, with that being said, the other things that we're looking at is how can we improve or at least enhance fire, uh, fire department response? Uh, ISO is always on the top of our list to try to, uh, benefit the, uh, their constituents, and also to, uh, to improve the homeowner and the business insurance. Uh, with these conversations, they have proposed changes in, in response districts, uh, in the Moayok-Crawford area and also down in the Crawford, uh, Lower Currituck area, the Water Lily area. Uh, some of the reasons that drove this forward was, uh, most effective and efficient fire department response to the residents and the businesses. The ISO, and by the way, what we're asking for, or what they have actually brought forward is no cost to the citizens or the county, and, uh, also it improves the five-mile radius, which has a determinant with the, uh, ISO ratings, uh, currently and, uh, and in the future, and I'll get to that just a little bit more. So, the bottom line is result in savings in insurance, fire insurance costs to the homeowner and the businesses. That being said, some of the things that the, the folks in the, in the community can expect is enhanced fire response to these areas, uh, efficient use of the resources of the fire department, um, improved safety to the responders is another one that they've identified. Uh, again, moving some of these lines, uh, and having, uh, some more efficient response will do that. Uh, but the, the ISO rating kind of is driving this thing as well. Uh, in this move, there are places and homes and businesses will be moved into a five-mile radius of the departments. Uh, at this point, they're sitting out there on the fringes of that, and they don't realize some of the savings and benefits of an improved ISO rating. They're rated at around a 9. Correct. And then the homes and businesses, uh, when these moves are made, uh, if approved, would be brought into not only the five-mile radius, but any home or business within 1,000 feet of a hydrant, a fire hydrant, could see, um, moves and increases or, or betterment of their, their designation from a 9 to, in some areas, a 6, or in some areas, a 7, which are some substantial, uh, savings to the homeowner. So, again, the other thing that they're doing, and very much complimentary to them, is they're looking at in the areas that the homes that aren't affected, that are still going to be in a rated 9 district, they're looking at a water supply process that, working amongst the mutual aids of the fire departments, possibly creating what they call a, a method 3, uh, in water supply, uh, response that will help bring these other improvements to the ISO ratings into their districts and drop those into the 6 and the 7 area. Correct. Um, with that, what can they expect? Notable savings, and, and we're not going to quote savings here tonight because there's still a little bit of work that needs to be done. But the businesses and the homeowners in these districts, as you'll see by the map in just a second, that if this moves forward and, and there's action and approval by, by you ladies and gentlemen, would be that, um, in about 120 to 180 days, once this process gets forward to, uh, from you to the North Carolina Office of the State Fire Marshal, and from there to the ISO Central Office in New Jersey, um, they can, they can actually contact their insurance companies and start to realize a reduction in fire insurance rates, which I think is a good thing in this time, uh, not only with the economy, but also, um, with the things that were mentioned in that last presentation. So, uh, the amount and timing of these benefits, however, are going to be dependent on the individual homeowner, and it's also going to be something that they, or, and business owner, something they need to be talking to their insurance company about in the next few months.
Chief Glover, I, I do want to interject that, uh, depending on the drop in the rating, it could be anywheres from 10 to some cases up 25 percent savings on their homeowner's insurance.
Yes, sir.
On preliminary figures, yes, significant.
Absolutely. And I saw a scale, and, and until this goes through and until they make those final reevaluations and those adjustments, um, you're absolutely right, Mr. O'Neill, that there, there are some folks out there that are going to get some relief from high insurance costs, and I think that's a great thing.
He would know. I mean, he gets our money and half for insurance.
Yes, sir, I'm sure. And he's brought that forward and actually worked with this group to, to help bring this forward. If you see the, the map that's up on, on the display, um, if you look over where the little green box is, currently, that's where the Crawford Response District, that's Tolles Creek Road, and the Crawford Response District, kind of the line is right there at the Tolles Creek, uh, Bridge. And, and if you look up, you have, uh, Tolles Bay Colony, which is a bit north. What this is going to do is move the Crawford area north, uh, through the Tolles Bay Colony area to the north side of that, uh, and it will reduce the Moayok Response District, if you will, from a first response to a second response just on the other side, south. You can also see the colored area in there where it's more of a shaded area. That's the overlap of the five-mile, five-mile, uh, district area. So, a- again, that area falls in both Crawford-Moayok. So, again, response, uh, ISO ratings and, and the like.
So, I guess, to me, it would, it's very important that everybody understands that they're not losing anything, they're gaining.
That's correct.
The only difference is first response due and second response due, same companies, same organizations are still going to be responding, and I think that's important for everybody to understand.
Thank you. And you're absolutely right. And the mutual aid agreements aren't changing. Again, it's just a matter of how better to serve that part of the district. This is actually just, if you look at the Moayak Response District, if this change should occur, if you look over in that right side corner a little up, you'll see where that slight change has been made over near the Tolles Creek area. From the south, currently, the Water Lily District, Lower Currituck, if you will, stops right at the foot or right around the foot of the Coin Jock Bridge. And on the other side of the bridge is currently the Crawford area.
In the middle of the bridge?
In the canal, thanks. Thanks for explaining that one. What this is going to do, which is a good thing, is it's going to move the Water Lily District, Lower Currituck District, north from the bridge through the center of the canal, over into the Coin Jock area. And as you can see, there are several residents there that can benefit from this. Not only from, it will move this into the five-mile radius of Water Lily Station, which is a good thing. There are going to be some residents there that will not realize the savings, but it will put at this particular time. But it will keep them in a nine rating. And it also moves them into that five-mile radius that when the method three, and if, when the method three occurs, there's a high potential that they would see some savings there and some of their rerating. For the others that live in this area with the hydrants that are in this district, that they live within the 1,000-foot of those hydrants, they will look at, again, realization of some of the savings there. And this is actually just a depiction of the proposed Crawford Township District after, if that change were made. And you see on the lower bottom side where that adjustment in the Coin Jock area has been made.
Chairman, a couple of questions on...
Certainly.
Okay, you're losing a section on Bull Yard Road, Buckhorn Road, and then it looks like White Horse Station. It's on South Gregory Road. Why are those places cut in like that? Is it...
Nothing was lost in those areas.
There were no adjustments there, sir.
It's only the Water Lily, Coin Jock, and the...
Well, they're not showing being, if the blue is the service area, they're not showing being represented.
I don't think the blue is a service area. I think the blue is showing your five-mile radius.
Five-mile radius, yes, sir. Not the service area.
Is that the road area? Is that road miles?
Road miles, five miles.
Lot aerial.
They're currently a nine because of the auto aid that we have in place. They, because of the auto aid between departments, they dropped from a 10 to a nine.
Which is a good thing. And that's where the chiefs are working very diligently to improve the ratings there with the method three water supply.
Just wanted to clarify, show me, make sure why it was showing that way.
Yes, sir. That's the five-mile radius.
So in the analysis that's been done, what this is going to do, no one's insurance or ISO rating is going to go up. It just has the potential of bringing people's ISO ratings down.
That's correct.
Okay. I know Mr. O'Neill and myself have been involved in this as we went along. Chief Daly, thank you so much for all the work that you have put into this. He first brought this up, him and Chief Glover. We met, made loads of sense to me, and I think it did to Paula as well. And I know Paula has been more involved recently than I have due to some other issues. But I think this is good, and this is a positive thing for our citizens. And I just want to thank all of you for the time and effort that you put in each and every day for what you do. But at least for this particular portion, you know, in these tight economic times, can save, if you can save $25, it's $25. So thank you.
John, nice job. Any other questions?
I'd like to thank you guys for protecting us, your away from your families. I stop by Station Five from time to time. And I mean, thank you for what you do for us. And I mean that. I mean, you sacrifice, your family sacrifice, and you need to get more pats on the back. So thank you.
I want to echo that along with the other commissioners. I too worked a little bit with you guys and certainly appreciate you doing all this due diligence to get the districting and get those rating, the rates down. Being the Moayak Commissioner, I get tons of phone calls about their ratings from citizens and not having water sources or hydrants. So thank you many, many times. Over.
Mr. O'Neill?
Well, there's not a whole lot of thank you I can add to it, except thank you. You've done a great job. And it's to benefit the people you serve and we serve. Doesn't benefit you or me. It benefits the people that we serve, and that's what it's all about. I will put in a plug for the fire departments. They need some volunteers. Anybody at home watching this tonight, it's a lot of fun, a lot of hard work, but it's very rewarding. And they're out in the community all the time, and not just when there's a, the bell goes off. They were Saturday at Coin Jock Baptist Church. They had a truck there, Lower Currituck did, and they were doing things and think someone made some Brunswick stew. And, but it's not just about going on the fire call. It's about being busy in your community. And they, Lower Currituck, Crawford, Moayak, Knott's Island, Corova, Corolla, they could all use some more volunteers. And I'm hoping in our next county newsletter, we can do a little spread on the fire departments and what it takes to be a volunteer, and how people could contact the individual fire departments within their district if they wanted to volunteer. And then that goes to every household in Currituck. Is that something we could do, Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the chiefs for allowing me to present this information form this evening.
Well, you know, this all fits in the realm of something we all talked about a couple of years ago, of having coordinated efforts. And it's paying off. We see it. That's what this is all about. And thanks again.
Thank you.
With that, I will ask the board for a motion.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to also extend my thanks. And what I think this is indicative of is the true sense of volunteerism. You didn't have to do this because it didn't benefit you one way or the other. But it does benefit the citizens that you serve. And they will see this benefit, and they will thank you, not us. They'll be thanking you. And hopefully, as Commissioner O'Neill said, that'll be bringing people to you who are willing to volunteer their time. Thank you.
Ask the board for a motion?
Sir, may I?
I'll second it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. You gentlemen, have a nice evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming. Item number 10, consent agenda.
Blue for approval.
Okay, with the additions that we had.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good deal. Eyes have it. Commissioners report. Mr. Martin, I'll start with you this evening, sir.
All right, the two, on our county website, if you go to the home site, you're going to see something new that's been added. Barbara Snowden, who taught for many years in the county school system, and she's our county historian, but Barbara has put together, with the help of other volunteers through the county, an addition to our county website. We are trying to find and place all the veterans here in the county, both deceased and living. We really would love to have all of our veterans identified, those who have lived in the county and who have left, those who are living here now. But it's a very simple thing to go on our website and put down the person's name, address, also their rank, date of birth, actions that they may have seen, decorations, and all of it is now available. And if you want to, you can go to the website now, and you can see Civil War veterans who have been put up. We actually have a list of Revolutionary War veterans. Those will be appearing, as well as listings of World War II, Korea, and we're working on that. But we would really like to be able to touch the veterans who have called Currituck home. And just go there and remember, on the 11th hour, the 11th day, the 11th month of 1918, an armistice was declared. And in 1953, that day became known as Veterans Day. So if you see a veteran, shake their hand, pat them on the back. I know Ruby Tuesday's and a few other restaurants are giving free meals to veterans, Golden Corral as well. And these are young men and women who are now going in harm's way. And so just remember, Veterans Day, and the Veterans Day celebration is 11 o'clock at Veterans Memorial Park, as Bob Kohler spoke in the start of the meeting. And please try to come out and celebrate and say thank you to the veterans here in our county.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Etheridge?
Make this brief. You know, we are coming up on Thanksgiving, and Mr. Patrick can talk to us better than I can. But we've been fortunate with the food banks to receive some large donations of food recently, Tyson Foods and whatnot. But there's going to be a whole lot more pressure on our food banks coming up to Thanksgiving. And anything that we as individuals might be able to do to help, it might be greatly appreciated, I'm sure.
Mr. O'Neill?
I had one thing I wanted to bring up. I talked with Mr. Scanlon today. In our budget last year, we appropriated money to fix the pier out at Veterans Park. And since we're talking about the Veterans Day celebration, usually, people sat out there on the pier. Well, the pier was damaged. Was it a couple boats ran into it, Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir.
And we're running in, catch this now, you're not going to believe this, we're running into some Corps of Engineer problems about getting permitted to rebuild the exact thing that's already there. So I've had a couple people ask me about it, and I told them we fixed it in the budget, not knowing that it still was a problem. So a lot of people will be out there Friday for the Veterans Celebration. And I just wanted to get that information out there. We're diligently working on it. Mr. Scanlon assured me that we're in the short rows now, and hopefully, we'll have a resolution real soon.
Good.
And one other thing, as you know, the YMCA is looking to appoint some members locally to a local YMCA board. I think that if anyone is interested in serving on the YMCA board, they could go to the internet website of Currituck County and fill out one of our volunteer forms. Plus, if you're interested in serving in any other committee, we're always looking for people that are qualified and willing to serve and interact on these boards. But the YMCA board is going to be appointed probably after the first of the year, maybe, Mr. Scanlon?
It'll be sooner.
Sooner. So we have had a few people that have expressed an interest. If you, commissioners know of anyone, or if anyone watching this is interested, you need to go to the website and fill out an information form. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Nothing tonight. I've spoken enough.
Mr. Petrie?
Two things. As Commissioner Etheridge talked about, it is coming up Thanksgiving and the holidays. And I know the Lower Currituck Food Pantry in September passed out food to 807 people. That's in Grandy. I know Pillmore, I'm not sure what their numbers are. And I think Moayak Methodist might be having a pantry. But I know that the two main pantries, Pillmore and Lower Currituck Food Pantry, is going to be part of, I went to the thing at the Albemarle Food Bank the other day, where Tyson Foods donated 32,000 pounds of protein chicken products. So we're thankful for that. And if you have any extra canned goods, when you go into the food lines at a grocery store that you'd like to donate, drop it by the pantry, Lower Currituck Food Pantry. I know their hours are every Tuesday from 5:30 to 7:00, and every Wednesday from 10:00 to 2:00. Or you can contact me, and I'll meet you there. So think of others at this time of year. The other thing, along with the YMCA, I had the privilege of touring our new Currituck YMCA the other day. This thing is a gem. I mean, this, it's really, I can't say enough about, the outdoor pool will have water slides, and it'd be like a water theme park. The indoor lap pool is there. They're going to have a great gem. But the big thing about it is, they're going to, they're in the process of starting to take applications for jobs. And the word that I got last Wednesday was they're going to hire, you know, depending on the time of year, obviously, between 125 and 150 part-time people at the Currituck YMCA. So anybody out there, it's not a full-time job, but as my father used to say, it's better than a sharp stick in the eye. Part-time job, you can make some money. You can go to Currituck Family YMCA, or you can call this phone number, 252-453-9632, and maybe go over there and fill out a job application. So it's really going to be nice. Grand opening is December 27th. A lot of us have already got our memberships, and we're looking forward to the Y opening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Petrie, I have one question. The Tyson Food donation, is that specific for food pantries? Or is this something that Project Emanuel at Knott's Island could get involved in as well? Or just, I'm just asking.
It's going to be shared with the, I guess it's eight counties, you know, depending on what you do. If you're part, if you're already part of the Food Bank of the Albemarle Network, then yes.
Okay, I think they are.
Okay, what you need to do is get over there. I've already talked to Polly Gregory, our drill sergeant. And she's getting her name in the hat. So Project Emanuel, if they're part of the network, give them a call. And you want to talk to Liz Reasoner?
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert?
I just want to remind everybody, kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Petrie said about the YMCA, charter memberships are available through the 12th at a discount. So I encourage you, if you want a discount, to get in there and go ahead and get your membership prior to Saturday. And they are open Saturday from 9:00 until 12:00, taking applications at the Cooperative Extension Center. In addition to that, if you will visit AJ Gators from November 6th through the 12th, and mention when you patron that location in Moayak, that you want your money to go towards the Moayak Athletic Department at Moayak Middle School. They, at the end of the week, will give 10% of their sales to the Moayak Middle School. So I encourage you to go have some dinner and make sure that you mention that you're here to support the Moayak Middle School athletic program. And lastly, just want to remind everybody, just as Josh mentioned earlier, the first annual poultry pardon and winged. I, you know, after going through a hogwash, what's a poultry pardon? So I am looking forward to that, and I encourage everybody to attend that on Sunday afternoon.
I want to add one addition to that, too. I don't know if Josh mentioned it, but they'd like donation of canned goods at that particular function, too. So everybody, if you can't turn out, bring something that can be contributed to the food pantry as a result of that.
I just have a couple of things. Just let the board and the people at home know, the dredging project for the Corova Beach Community Park has been completed. So we now have boating access there to where boats could get up to the ramp, get up to the ramp, as well as the docks. That has been done. And I believe that the spools are being removed as we speak. Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And I appreciate you staying on top of it and getting that done.
Corps of Engineers, don't get upset.
I don't know what they know, but anyhow. And the second thing, I think, if y'all recall, I mentioned to Mr. Scanlon at our last meeting about the dredging out of the boat ramp over at Knott's Island. About a year ago, we sent a request in to North Carolina Wildlife folks to take a look at that. Ball got dropped, whatever, I don't know. But anyhow, Mr. Scanlon has since been in touch with them. On Thursday of this week, if the good Lord's willing, I am going to meet on site with them and use my boat and take them and show them the hydrology and the depths and what needs to be cleaned out so people can have access and get in and out of there.
Do you want to have the Corps with you?
No, I'm not going to have the Corps there. No, no. I'll let them handle the permits. With that, that's all I have. Managers report?
Mr. Chairman, just would like to announce another open house public forum that's scheduled. We are getting close to the end of the UDO rewrite. The last piece of that is coming together. The county staff will be holding a public forum a week from tonight, on November 14th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the Town Bank in Grandy. And we encourage the citizens to stop by and take a look at that rewrite. We are getting real close to bringing the whole package together. And sometime in the next several months, we'll be bringing that forward for y'all's consideration. That's it.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Next, I need a motion to recess the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. Next, I need a motion to recess the Currituck County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. I would like to now reconvene as the Tourism Development Authority. Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Chairman, you have two budget amendments for your consideration. One is dealing with, we were just put on notice, that the state has increased a fraction of the required contribution for retirement funds. You have a budget amendment to reflect that in your octotax, and then you have another budget amendment is a request to move money within the fund. And I'll be happy to answer questions, any of those you might have.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn from the Tourism Advisory Board?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I would like to reconvene to Currituck County Board of Commissioners meeting and ask for a motion to go into closed session according to GS 143-318.113, to consult with attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.